Well, I think what we're wanting to lock is the allocation.
Because we have to select a number tonight and we can't go back and change it because you have to go back up.
So what you would do is you would, I would assume, make a motion to change the allocation first, right, Tony?
Yes.
And then, then when you, is what you're essentially doing is you're approving this budget with changes to set the resolution, or for the resolution to set the public hearing, however that goes, and it would be a not to exceed amount of, it just changes, I believe, nine forty-nine is the correct number now, right? So that would be the only change, is instead of the high watermark being nine forty-two, thirty-four, it's nine forty-nine ninety-eight.
It doesn't seem that significant.
Can I, can I suggest that you round up on some of these purposes of, nine fifty, nine four, five forty-six, ninety?
That was the motion I was going to make. There's a motion on the floor.
Mark Brown.
Does the board just want to see that?
Yes, go ahead.
Isn't there a motion on the floor?
There is.
Okay, can we vote on that motion?
We can.
Thank you.
The motion on the floor is to proceed with version A of the budget. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
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 Okay, let me make a secondary suggestion for you, just to keep in mind. You can take version A and make that your number. There are going to be plenty of other changes that you're going to make that will adjust the.
See, that necessitates the, the, the budget portion of it. And we're, we're on thin ice with that budget to begin with, as far as I'm concerned. I'd make a motion that we go with the version B, with changing the allocation to the fifty-nine, twenty-seven, fourteen, and that we establish as the limits, five hundred and seventy-five dollars for the general fund at Gateway, nine hundred and fifty dollars for the fund at Pelican Preserve.
Residential.
Residential.
Before you, I hate to make it that much more confusion, confusing. You actually would be accepting version A with the change, because version B budget, there's a lot more change in version B.
Right.
This is just a summary that you're seeing. If you were looking at the actual budget, there's the changes for the commercials, you're essentially approving version A with the change.
So you're clarifying that there are line items in the version B budget that are radically different than the individual line items in version A?
Only in the summary of the assessment.
My problem is, I thought Stephen just ran the version A with the fifty-nine, twenty-seven, fourteen.
He did. So that's what I'm saying, you essentially would be approving version A with that.
So don't accept version B.
Not B.
Version A, version A. With the percentage change. So version A on this sheet that I'm looking at is now fifty-nine, twenty-seven, fourteen? Right. And that's it?
So I would, for a second, I think for the minute, for the transcriber, I think we need to, if we're going to have a version for discussion with this revised allocation to fifty-nine, et cetera, that that be called version A dash two. So I don't want to get into the seat, because it's taking A, but, and just modifying the allocation.
For clarification, make sure everybody is on stage. Version A shown on this screen in front of us right now is a fifty-nine, twenty, or fifty-nine, twenty-seven, fourteen split, and that's it.
Fifty-nine, fourteen.
No, twenty-seven. And that's it.
Okay.
Is that correct?
That's not correct.
He can move it over.
Because it's accurate.
Yeah, go ahead, Mrs. Clarity.
I have to go.
Okay.
I need another meeting.
Can I go with you?
Stephen, I thought, I thought what you had done before this was going on, that you had changed version B. And it is correct.
Okay.
Is the number.
Stephen has changed the version B that is in front of us, and it does reflect the fifty-nine, twenty-seven, fourteen period.
But I think Michael said that version B has different numbers for, in various line items in the summary. So we need to do this for A, fifty-nine?
What do you mean, different with line items?
Mike, you want to explain that again?
I'm going to make a suggestion.
Can we approve version A with the fifty-nine, fourteen, twenty-seven amendment or changes?
With the not to exceed of nine forty-nine fifty.
Yeah.
And then, and now, and all of the line items that are in this budget will remain the same.
Yes.
There will be no changes to individual line items if we agree to the allocation of fifty-nine, fourteen, twenty-seven.
Well, that's what the purpose of the resolution. You can't change it. Yeah, but if you're changing the cap, you can move stuff a bit.
Yeah.
Move stuff around.
That lady.
You, right now, you're voting on your maximum amount, right?
Yes.
And you can tell us, you know, these are your amounts that you want, give me a budget that matches that.
Stephen, I think we're confused. You still have the amount, right, are they, some of them are version B amount versus version A amount?
No, everything in version B would be, would be the amounts that you're voting on if you want to make this allocation change. So if you, if you change the allocation, the general fund would now become five seventy-four, fourteen per EAU, and then, you know, the commercial would become four hundred and twenty dollars, you know, sixty-two cents. Nine forty-nine ninety-eight would be the residential, and then the next two don't change. Those would be your per EAU assessment amounts.
Under version A.
Under version A. Now, to Michael's point, when you make these, every time you make a change to allocations, there are line items that are changing with it. But if you approve what's in version, you approve the amounts in version A, everything, you know.
With the allocation is revised.
Correct. That will be what your budget becomes.
That's, that's why, when you do that, the five seventy-four, fourteen is the number.
Yeah, correct.
That's what was the motion I was making, and I was rounding it off.
Well, let me, let me try this first. Let's, let's, I'm going to make a motion that we go with the allocation of the fifty-nine, fourteen, the fifty-nine, fourteen, twenty-seven. That's my motion. That's the way that we want the allocation to be.
I'll second that.
Okay?
Yep.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We've got that down.
Now, we're going to give a max.
Yes.
That only takes thirty minutes.
Now, we'll work on the.
Public comment.
Raise it next to the next five dollars on each one of them.
In for discussion, you're working now on version A with the revised allocation.
Okay. But version A with the revised allocation is going to be the numbers that are actually in column B.
Yeah, correct.
You got that?
Yeah.
Guys, what says that we have to round this off? Just put up those numbers showing there, and we're done with it. Just be knowing, we don't have to make it five seventy-five, that's five seventy-four, fourteen, because when you add in the debt, it's going to be an oddball number anyway.
There we go, version two A.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is.
Increased column.
Thank you. Okay, do we?
I'd take the maxes as they're showing it. We do with it.
No. Motion to approve version A dash two?
Second.
We have a motion on the, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Many opposed?
Once we get going, we get going. It takes us a little while to get the car started.
That was painful.
So the.
Now, we need a motion to approve the.
To adopt the resolution with the revised, the resolution two thousand and nineteen dash six, with revision to the, the date will be August fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen, at five P M. In Church of God.
Gateway Trinity Lutheran Church.
Yeah, Trinity.
Public comment on time?
Wait, if we could, if we could, you can just get to this part first. Five P M, in the location.
Gateway Trinity Lutheran Church, one one three eight one Gateway Boulevard.
Okay. Are you saying this too early?
Yes. We have people that still work for a living. Make it six, at least give them a chance.
I don't have a problem with six, then.
Is this a Thursday?
I don't know. Yes. Should be one of your meeting days.
That's what I was thinking. I was thinking.
I just wanted to make sure that the church was clear. If we go to the.
Yeah, I've checked.
It is a Thursday. Yes.
So we have a three o'clock meeting and then a six o'clock public area.
Yep. I'll buy the pizza.
Chris or Tony?
I need something stronger than pizza.
What's going?
Well, I'll, I'll make, I'll stop in the appropriate section of the office.
Was this exhibit A, I've seen too many exhibits that this board's approved over the years, that never attach. Notice that exhibit A will look like.
Exhibit A will be the version A budget with the.
A dash two.
Yes, with the revised allocation.
So Stephen, is it just chart that's in front of us right now?
More than that. No, no, sir, more. It's the budget. It's the bu.
The, the chart that I just put on the screen for you is going to be the full chart.
This one right here, right here.
Yeah. That's got, you can see the five seventy-four.
Yeah.
You can see the four nine forty-nine, four twenty, and then when you get over towards the green here, that also now includes your lake bank.
Okay.
Includes Pelican Preserves debt and the Area Two debt, which we haven't talked about yet to get you.
Yeah, and what will also happen is pages two and three, which are the summary, will be revised to reflect the board's action on the allocation adjustment.
My, my question is, the biggest one, the people, this here is just nothing but math crunch, and is the final result. What the people are interested in looking at is the five million dollars we approved, and where's it going? Is that not in exhibit A?
No, the whole budget. For example, what you see, the thirty-some odd page document that's in your book.
Yes.
Is what will be attached to exhibit A.
Yeah, it will be modified to match these numbers.
That's in the red, that, oh, I guess I'm not saying it right. That's in the resolution. Is it in the newspaper?
No.
So nobody's going to see any of this.
I mean, it was on the website.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah, we have a website. This is apparently for the purpose of your assessment.
Old paint, glass, can't see nothing.
No, no, no.
We never published the whole budget in the newspaper.
And that's the problem. That's the problem. We need this thing so much for somebody to look at.
The matter, we do publish it, it's on the website.
Yeah, right.
It's a thirty-some odd page.
As long as we say that.
What's in the resolution?
The mail notice as well has language in there that refers people if they want to see the whole budget.
Yeah, and I believe it even says the amount, like the total amount of the budget.
That's, that's why.
Yes, and then what happens is when the individual notice goes out, and the notice that's in the paper, first of all, the notice in the paper may have a chart. Secondly, the individual notice goes out, say, you property owner have X number per E R U, this will be charged at Y dollars per E R U, that will generate Z dollars, and that's in the notice that goes out.
Let, let, let me be specific. Will the public be able to see pages ten, I'm sorry, pages six, I'm looking at version A, pages six through?
The whole document gets posted on the website.
Yeah.
Are we doing, mailing?
Item four.
Posting on the.
Yeah, we don't mail the whole budget, but it all gets posted on the website.
They have access to it.
I'm going.
Is there any objection to changing five o'clock to six o'clock?
No.
Okay. So now do I have a motion to accept resolution twenty nineteen dash six, with the changes to the time to six P M, and the change of location to Gateway Trinity Lutheran Church?
And, and the exhibit A will be the revised budget as of due discussion by the board with the modified allocation to be repaired by staff.
That's what you said.
That's what I said. That's what I was thinking.
That's what I heard.
May I ask you a question, Madam Chair?
Well, I'll second that, so we can discuss.
Thank you. You're telling me that we're going to have a board meeting here at three o'clock, and it's going to be over at three thirty, or four thirty, or five, or five thirty, and then we're going to transfer over to Trinity Lutheran Church?
Start this meeting later. Start this meeting later.
We can start the regular meeting later.
I thought we'd go to tavern and have a pint.
We have choices.
Server booth.
Understand what you're suggesting.
I understand. I understand. I agree.
Yeah, because that would time to be set for an hour.
Oh, yeah.
That would be better for me.
To start this meeting later?
Yes.
And we have plenty of time to advertise.
Absolutely.
We can start this meeting at four.
So Stephen, did you hear that? Or did you hear that?
Yes.
The board adopted that?
That passes.
Okay, well, we've got a motion to, for a resolution twenty nineteen dash six. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Many opposed? And then I'll make the motion that we start the regular meeting on August fifteenth, twenty nineteen, at four P M instead of three P M.
And that'll be here.
And then I'll be here.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Michael, you got the word version, you want to make the changes to the resolution or not?
Yeah, I can make it tomorrow morning.
Yeah, definitely, you got the word version, I saw that.
Yeah, we have it.
All right. Chris is nine steps ahead of us. That's really word.
Okay. That brings us to surface water maintenance standards.
Item we brought up at the last meeting, and was basically revisions to the surface water maintenance standards, and the items that were changed are all listed on the second page. There were basically twenty-four items, most of them minor, but a few of them are significant as far as the littoral removal policy.
And there was a request to have, the people wanted littorals planned, that that be handed in to the document, and it was.
Margaret, I think a motion that before we have any other discussion on this, we establish and have a community-wide public hearing, so that everybody is aware of what is being proposed by this, because I can tell you, this is not going to fly in D R F.
Anyone want a second?
I second that.
Do we have a public board talk on this?
Yeah. Here in public here.
I have no problem. Take this document as its, what do you call it, redlined or whatever, get that out, have the one that we have currently, and then let the residents read that and understand what we're proposing, because we're talking about one major change.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm opposed.
We'll work on setting the time for that hearing and the advertising.
Okey-dokey.
Jump with the leak out, see what they available, they didn't state any of this.
I just. I just don't think that they have any.
No, but if we don't, at least we can, we can tell we have an opportunity for people to come and learn more, and I think that's how we structure it, is we do a presentation, and then open it up. Yeah, the next item is mine, I'll go through it quickly, which basically, we had installed the gate at the fun park, we had gotten complaints from the neighboring association about people parking, their votes on the weekend, overnight parking, after-hours parking, people coming in there, turning their car lights on to shine on the basketball court to play at late hours, and basically, we have the gate there, but we need to authorize that area as a tow zone.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
I'm going to.
No.
Motion fails for lack of form. You might want to bring this back.
Yeah, that was good.
Yeah, it said a tie vote, so it fails.
Yeah, I think the next item is yours, Tony, Karina's.
Yes, thank you, briefly. This is an opportunity here, finally, to wrap up the issues concerning the Karina Phase Two flowway issue, the permit challenge, and we have, all the parties have signed so far the drainage facilities agreement, the settlement agreement is approved by WCI and AR, and the recommendation is for the board to authorize the chairman to, for the board to approve the settlement agreement, authorize the chair to execute the settlement agreement, to approve the form and substance of the partial assignment of drainage achievements, authorize the chair to execute the partial assignment of drainage achievements, and subject to the above, that the leak in the bill of sale, reference pipes that we really don't want to take, that, that the board take all those actions to resolve this permit challenge.
Tony, one question on this one that's got me concerned. We're talking about doing some mathometric studies, and scared to death on what those mathematics are going to show as we enter Pelican and head down toward the bridge. If that shows that the construction of the flowway is not pursuant to the approved plans and/or South Florida Water Management District approval, what has this put us behind?
Well, here's the difficulty, that we did not raise that as an issue when the permit transfer was made, we had the certification, that we also had the, we were backed into a corner on the transfer to the operating entity status by South Florida Water Management District.
That's what I was.
And the only basis for the challenge that we had at that time was that we did not have adequate access to the facility for maintenance activities. So this, we, that time to challenge that is, I believe, is gone from the standpoint of a permit challenge. What we would have to do if we find out, and we can show that at the time of the transfer, that the condition of the flowway did not meet the specifications based on the mathometric survey, if we can prove that to South Florida, we can ask South Florida to go back to AR, WCI, to try to fix it, and that's our only remedy that we have. Unfortunately. We are where we are. Yes, sir.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Many opposed?
Thank you.
And assessment methodology is being deferred, I believe, but you are here. Go right ahead.
Okay. There wasn't anything. Let me get my quick slide. Yeah.
Thank you for the presentations. We've been here the whole meeting.
No problem. I sat through one at Ave Maria the other day, and it took me five minutes to make a presentation, and I was there two and a half hours, so.
Hurry up and get done, so you can play hockey.
There you go. Championship night. Okay, go on next.
About two hours, then.
Okay, I want to give you a quick update on the methodology. I've worked and worked and worked, and was hoping to have it ready for this budget. It's just so many things that could be coming up, as you're well aware, there's just so many parcels and issues that we're addressing. We're getting a lot of things cleaned up, which is the good news. If you, one slide for it, please. Here's the status, our, you know, the tri-generation, the impervious surface calculations have been determined for all the parcels, and it's already set up in the workbook that we're going to be using to determine these assessments. Probably about eighty-five percent there in terms of going across, but now we're fine-tuned in parcels and stuff like that. But we're still running into unit count and parcel designation issues. We're getting very close on the unit count part. We still have to do a little bit more on the commercial side. Close. Yes. Yes, we are getting close. And then, but we were unable to implement the new methodology, of course, for this, this fiscal budget. But, and I'm going to propose to you the timing for the next fiscal year, and what, we'll have some time, a little breathing room, we'll have a couple of workshops to be able to go through it in detail.
Just go do A and B and A two.
It'll be C, Bill.
Yeah, now what I'm going to try to do is get, get it close to where, how your assessments have been done, and we'll talk about that when I get further on down the road. So it won't be as confusing as some of the other ones will be. Next slide for me. I wanted to give you an idea of kind of the detail we're going through at the moment. This slide shows you the, this is a measurement of pervious versus impervious surfaces, and this would be for a water management calculation. So in other words, if that parcel was roughly five acres, four point six acres is going to be pervious versus impervious, and we will use that percentage when we calculate it all the way out. But I just want to give you an idea of the detail that we're going through in measuring the commercial parcels. The residential parcels are basically done with, we use the Lee County property praiser data, and in the Lee County property praiser data, it has, it'll say, you know, you have your acre of your parcel, and then it'll have the building area, and then it'll have the gross building area, which includes driveways, pools, all that kind of good stuff. So we use that as the measurement, so I don't have to go through and measure each house that's here. But we have to do the commercial ones, because they are done a little bit differently. Next slide. No, and here was another thing, we were talking about the lakes, Pelican, Pelican Preserve, that's the golf course parcel. That's three hundred and seventy-some odd acres, three hundred and some odd acres. Well, a lot of that is water management. And so, so as a part of my analysis, I'm going through to, to calculate how much of it is actually water management, golf course, wetlands, that kind of thing, and how much is actually playable surface. So if you go to the next, or before you go to there, what I wanted to show you, when you look right next to the town center, right over the town center, on the north side of that, that whole wetland area that you can go back into, the preserve, you can drive back in there, and that's a part of the golf course. It's in the golf course parcel. And that's what I'm saying, we, we, this is the part that I'm going through and analyzing. So if you take the next, next slide, I'll show you.
Is the town center, is the town center part of the golf course parcel? How is that?
Part of it is.
It's in the three ninety-eight point four acreage.
Yeah, part of it is.
So it's, it's assessed commercially?
No.
Assessed as one.
One, one E R U per acre.
As the golf course.
One per acre. Yeah. But that's part of my methodology, I'm going to go through and make recommendations as we go forward. If you go to the next slide for me, please. That's the wetland I'm talking about. See how north of it is? It doesn't even touch the golf course, but it's golf course related, it has been all along. So consequently, I went through and completely did Pelican Preserves Golf Course, and took all of that stuff out, so I had a better acreage of it. Now, that'll be a part of my recommendation, I just wanted you to understand the detail that I'm going into, so that you would understand what is truly benefiting from that, because why are you assessing the water management system when it's the water management system that we're measuring? And it didn't make sense. So, you give me the next slide. The schedule, what the plan is now, now that I have a little bit of breathing room, is we're going to, a thorough vetting of all the parcels by the end of August, and that means I'm going to go through in each of the parcels, we have some that are in question, some, you know, a lot of them aren't, a lot of them are pretty much set, but we have some parcels that really, we need to do some verification and assessing them. The next part is, I will clean up a verification of the workbook itself, once we have the parcels in date by the end of October, and I'm hoping I could move that up a little bit, because the, like I said, I'm probably about eighty percent there, eighty-five percent there on the workbook itself, but we need to make some, to make sure the parcels, they all tie, and it all works out. Ultimately, what we want to do is that I will have a workbook where staff can take and just plug in the budget numbers, and it'll spit it out for you. That's the bottom line. That's the bottom line. Most of my methodology is to do that. The, then at that point, what I would like to do is have a, the workshop in November, maybe earlier, maybe October, if we can get, if I can get it done quick enough. And then we will go through in detail. So you can bring your pillows and go through in detail. So you do understand truly how it works. And then if we need a second workshop in December, we can do that in November, depending on how the timing works. And then, then we will start beginning the public vetting process in January so that it's ready, everybody's comfortable with it, we're in place, and next year's budget, we go with it. So that's where I'm at at the moment. Any questions?
We can put it to your last slide again for a second.
That one?
Yeah. The last line there. Oh, I see what it says.
Yeah.
Did that show the?
It may be the twenty-twenty-one.
Yeah, I was going to say that's the twenty-twenty-one budget, but it says May twenty. It's a, it's a date.
Yes.
It's a date, not, not the budget year.
Correct.
I misread that for sure.
Correct. So actually, it's fiscal year twenty, 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 twenty-one. Because you always go with the calendar. And all those things go. But you are correct. That will be fiscal year twenty.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll keep plugging.
Russ, thanks for all the work. This is way more because of these nuances of the assessment methodology. I've never seen anything like it.
The good news though, just so all of you understand, staff has been excellent to work with. And Liz has been really, really good to work with too. She is the.
I won't get a Christmas card from her.
How much are we going to pay for all of this?
My contract's thirty thousand. And I put in a lot more hours than that. I put in a lot of hours. And I mean, I was up the other night till two-thirty in the morning measuring that golf course.
Well, that's because he watched hockey game for three hours before.
No, I didn't. No.
I'm just kidding. Hockey game into overtime.
Yeah, that's what it was. But it was truly, truly, it does take a lot of work to do that. And we're trying to, not only that it cleans up a lot of the issues, that's what we're driving for. You'll have a good solid base of information at that point that we can all verify.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Could I ask a question before we move on?
Sure.
Not about this. I want to go back to item B. The Surface Water Management. I don't really think about what you're doing. But I want to know. I'm sorry. On the Surface Water Maintenance Standards, I understood that you all decided to have a public hearing, the date TBD.
Yes.
To be determined. I was provided a redlined copy of this document. You can't read it. Redlined, you just, so, so I got an unreadlined document. If we're going to ask the public to understand what you're doing, it might be beneficial to think about, here's the old document and highlight in another document, these are the changes, the critical changes. And then you have the revised document.
We can get a clearer redlined copy.
A better way to do that is to line out what you, what you're getting rid of and underline to do more. And then, and then have a clean copy.
Well, I got both the redlined and the clean, and you need to, you need to say, okay, here's the high-level changes that we made so that the public will have a clue. That's just feedback. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That brings us to consent agenda five A, B, and C.
With approval.
Second motion.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that brings us to supervisor comments. Mr. Guy.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I would like to report that the master association and Pelican Preserve on Monday has turned over the operation from the developer to a five-member resident organization, and that the full membership residents of Pelican Preserve have voted and elected the five residents that are going to be steering the master organization. We had two and now one of those new members in the audience. Phil is still here, Phil Masey. Nancy Olson, Philip Rotner, David Matthews, and Rich Ripford are the five new directors of the Pelican Reserve Master Association, and I congratulate you and wish you well.
Is this the master HOA?
It is.
Do you then have sub-associations within the community?
Oh, yes.
And sub-condo associations within the community?
Yes, both condo and HOA, they're totaled by twenty.
Just a question.
Twenty-eight of them.
Eight years of burn over this. Have you checked those sub-association documents such that they do not have provisions that are negatively impacting your covenants? We learned that at Gateway Greens. We got thirteen sub-associations. They have things in there like, for example, the master association is in charge of all drainage.
All what?
Drainage. It's, it's the CDD. My, my, my deal is, word of the wise, check the sub-association agreements to make sure they don't stipulate stuff that you don't agree to.
But, but this, the master association has existed. It's just transferring the.
So there wasn't a change in the covenants?
There was enough change in the covenant.
Oh.
They just.
You just got new warm bodies.
Exactly. It was controlled, it was controlled, it was a three-person bar board controlled by the developer. The developer had two members. We've expanded it to five, a five-person board, all residents.
Was there then a change or a provision to allow you guys to have the duties and the authorities and the responsibility of the declaration?
There.
We had that, do that extra. Because the WCI has, or Linar has no other property left in the community to where they have argument to be still a party to.
Oh, no, they still have property.
And then, okay, well then you will get that provision changed then.
Yeah, they, they, they won't be out of there for another three years.
Well, congratulations or condolences. I don't know which one.
That's what I was going to say. Congratulations and I'm sorry.
Yep.
Anything else, Mr. Guy?
Uh, no, Madam Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Banks?
Thank you.
Yeah, just one thing. I know that I've brought up before, and I guess it's important to me because I think I'm the only person up here that has kids at an age that would participate, but, you know, I have to be an advocate for the leagues and the parks in this community because my kids, most of my friends, that partake in it. And I think it's the low end of what I bring up. And if someone were to ask me, I'd say, like, you know, my agenda's not parks and rest. It's just, I happen to be a user, you know? But I've talked about the parks and especially like the soccer fields and amenities being open during the summer. And I've called out several times, and it's, a decision's already been made, locks are already on the fence, and no one from staff has had any common courtesy to reach out to me or to note by the board the decision's been made to close the fields down for the summer. And I had no idea someone was going to come to speak today, and I apologize for being late. But, you know, at some point, as much as I have supported staff, supported you, advocated your pay increase, there's still a lack of transparency and just overall communication to the board. I mean, I just don't understand it. So what I do want is, I need a list of all the improvements that are going to happen on that field this summer. And all, and so I can monitor. Because at the end of this, this time period, I hope to see a significant improvement in the fields that would warrant shutting our kids and our residents off during the summer and not allowing them access to parks that we pay for as a, as a taxpayer. I mean, I'm just, I don't understand. But we'll bring an agenda item and let everyone be aware of, you know, putting a gate up or wanting to tow someone. So I just.
Well, as far as the soccer field, the other parts I agree with, but the soccer field though, from an agronomics side, I'd like to have somebody in here like Mainscape to indicate to us, because they've indicated to us over in Gateway Greens, you've got to do that. You've got to do that. We need to have them telling us why we've got to do that. In other words, shut it down, let those fields rest. I think that would be very advantageous for us to hear that.
And I understand, I mean, look, I've, I've been around sports my whole life. I understand turf management and, and all this stuff. I, I know that you've got to get fields to rest. Same thing you do on the golf course. There's a reason why most courses don't play on Monday. Gives it a day to rest, and I get it. But again, I look at these fields and I see things that, that happen on an ongoing basis that Mainscape doesn't. It is not on top of. I mean, they're throwing sand in holes on a field. You might be able to get away with it a little bit on golf courses because it's got fertilizer and seed and other things that promote growth. But throwing sand in a six-inch-deep hole with kids that are ten and under, and sometimes even smaller, what's the first thing you learn to do with sand? You dig in it, you know? It, it's that, and there's ongoing maintenance. I think if we did a better job of the ongoing maintenance, you know, that's one thing. And during the summer, it's not like we run in leagues out there. It's, you know, probably a couple hundred kids throughout the summer that are going to use that space to go out and play. They're going to picnic. Kids are going to use it. I mean, so it's just, I understand why we would have maintenance, but we also have at least two other time periods where there's two months in between where there's times where we can shut down and have some maintenance. So, and I've watched it where we go the whole summer, not a thing happens. Two weeks before, summer ends or league starts, we go out there and we aerate. So the first month of the league, there's holes everywhere. So just the sequencing. And now, I'm not saying that you've had any, any part in, in years past, but, you know, I, it just, to be honest, it pisses me off because I keep having to have the same conversation around how can we maintain the parks, specifically the fields, and not have to shut, you know, lock everything out? I mean, the fact that we even have to lock the parks is something that just blows my mind. There's not many places that will shut their park down and put a chain on it and don't allow people to go on. So, that's my soapbox.
And I'll just give you a quick response because I was going to talk to you before the meeting, but we mentioned two meetings ago, we hired an independent consultant to come in and do an evaluation of all the maintenance that we're doing out there to make sure it is proper and have that second opinion. And we'll have that report for you in the next board meeting. And we may be able to leave, leave the field open. I did have a meeting with Mainscape because we tried to work some of that maintenance around with the deep-tide aeration machine that they use. Once it leaves here, it's not coming back. So they couldn't come back to do the other field or two, but there could be opportunities. And we also went out there and talked to the folks about repeding the fields so during the middle of the season, we switch everything. And so all those high-use areas.
Yeah, it makes perfect sense. And, and it's probably, because I know that you, you know, they put the metal spikes in, they, they have routines. Once you start painting those fields, it's, you know, it's a little pain to change it. But if that's what we need to do, then we make the leagues do that.
And we're going to take, we're going to take care of that, but I want to bring those recommendations forward. We're going to try to minimize that closing time and leave a field section open for kids or like you said.
Whatever, just have some consideration. That's the only thing I'm saying. And, and one thing to add to your list is, we need to get the PA fixed.
What's that?
The, the PA out there. There are only two speakers that even work and you can barely hear. And I know there's been a couple of cases out there where the lighting alarm's gone off when you vacate, or there's an emergency and something happens. So, and all it is, we talked about it before, just, it's probably just wiring. You just got to run, run the wiring system on. Yeah, whatever you got to do, sure.
In a little bit, in his defense, he did tell us that they were planning on shutting the fields down, but he would look into some way to keep at least one open. So he, he did tell us that that was going to happen, but that he would try.
They tell us every year, and I say the same thing. Find other options so you can keep our amenities open. We don't shut the pool down.
Well, we did to fix it.
I guess we did. You're right.
Shut the showers off.
Anyway, you know my point. I'm not, I'm not pointing blame. I'm just saying.
And I think there'll be some revelations from the consultant's report that I'll have with you if we can look ahead and minimize that.
Yeah, yeah. So, all right.
Mr. Tinkled?
One, one item. Chris, last meeting, you gave us a copy of a report. Is this an updated version?
That is the final report on the irrigation permitting side.
I read, I read that report and had one issue with it, and I hope we have a good answer for it. They included areas that were not irrigated.
Correct. And that's why there's an increase in the irrigation quantities if we look at adding the acreage from Florida Power Eastern.
No, no, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about going into areas of Pelican Preserve that we don't even irrigate. If I read that map and showed the map he's got, in fact, the one that's right here is showing you red lines which were identified as road right-of-way, we don't go past Casella. So all of what we call old Phase One of Pelican Reserve shouldn't be in our calculation. And I, I think they included it in all of that. The old map was the same way. And I think somebody is going to catch that and see that it's, the FPL, I have no problem all that. But when we go past the magic line or the weird fucking line that separates us from City of Fort Myers, we can't use that acreage to count for our irrigation because we don't irrigate.
It shouldn't be included in that. And then the next step would be is if we look at doing permit modifications that is different acreages, but I'll be able to consult.
Yeah, I think if, if we go into South Florida with a map that shows just exactly what we irrigate, then it is what it is. But if we show areas of an additional two-thousand acres that we don't even irrigate, and we're using that as the basis to justify more water, I don't think that dog's going to hunt. We're going to get caught. That's all I have.
I'd just like to bring up one thing, and that is, I'd like to have the un-park towing resolution come back because what, when we voted tonight, we really didn't discuss it. We've got a no parking sign up there, but we have no way to enforce it. And when, when we didn't vote to approve this tonight, we gave staff absolutely nothing, even the sheriff, absolutely nothing to actually remove vehicles that shouldn't be there after dark.
You mean like overnight marking?
Yeah. So I think.
Or you're parking after dusk?
I'd like to have that come back when we have a full board because what's the point of having a towing policy if we have no way to enforce it?
But there's a gate there, right?
There's a gate, but that's one thing that was in that agenda because I'm going to, I'm going to have staff start staying till, because of the dawn to dusk, especially in the summer, the soccer park. And leagues have the same thing too, because late, if they're running the lights, people are playing out there on the cast-off lanes, and then they're supposed to lock the gates, they don't. But I'll be having a staffer stay there ready to go open light. Those, also the soccer fields, because people play after, until after dark. Yeah, nine.
They'll do a dark tow.
And, but they'll, yeah, that, that, I just misstated that. They'll play till nine, nine fifteen, so you can't really go out there and say, we're closing at eight, try and get them off the field. So.
You, you close the gates.
Somebody's car in there.
We don't need to tow because they're probably not going to do that. They got to wait for the next day for the gate open.
Or they'll make donuts in the garage. With that, we are adjourned.
Six forty-one.
Six forty-one.